Get this workshop on the way. Charlie, are you ready to go? Thank you, Charlie. I would like to call this bidding to order, this workshop to order, and workshop item number one, but I will be calling for workshop item number two, section eight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to address us, please, and give us the... The briefing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item two is a discussion regarding CDBG COVID funds. And I will go into a brief summary, and then I'll have Ms. Joanne Long Poria, who is... This is funds coming through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, but the city of Mission was entitled the allocation of five hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and two. And there are some guidelines regarding this, the use of funds and the eligible activities. And I'll go through just real briefly, and I'll have Joanne explain the different categories and the details within it. But the eligible activities for this COVID funding, and it is through CDBG again, funding eligible activities is building and improvement, including public facilities, assistance to business, including economic development assistance and public service. Within those three guidelines, there are specifics within, and I'll have Joanne go into a summary of what these funds can be utilized for. And therefore, we'll have a... At the end of the presentation, we can move forward. The timeline for this particular funding is so that we can get consensus and direction for this funding to be able to bring it back to the council for approval the first meeting of June. So, Joanne.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. On April 2nd, 2020, the Department of Housing and Urban Development informed the city of a special allocation of five hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and two through the Coronavirus Aid, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is known as the CARES Act, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus, CDBG-CV, to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus, COVID-19. In order to simplify the processes, HUD released CARES Act flexibilities for use of CDBG-CV funds and authorized waivers of regulatory requirements to the community planning and development grant programing consolidated plan to prevent the spread of COVID and to expedite, facilitate, and assistance to eligible communities and households economically impacted by COVID-19. Flexibilities consisted of reducing the comment period to not less than five days, allow virtual public hearings when necessary for public health reasons, suspend the public services cap of fifteen percent, and local governments may reimburse costs of eligible activities used for pandemic response regardless of the date. Also required to prevent duplication of benefits, which means grant funds must not be used to pay costs if another source of financial assistance is available to pay that cost. A quick guide to CDBG eligible activities was issued on April 6th to support coronavirus response. As Randy mentioned, the first one there is building and improvements, including public facilities. And for this, we can do acquisition, construction, and site improvements. An example there is construction of facility for CV testing. We have a community building as a clinic, improve group living facilities to centralize patients. Another example is rehabilitation and improvements of a building. We can rehabilitate a commercial building as a clinic or a motel hotel to expand capacity in hospitals. Those are just some examples. The second category is assistance to businesses, including economic development assistance. That is assistance to private for-profit businesses in the form of grants, loans to support new businesses or business expansion to create retained jobs. Also, to avoid job loss by business closures related to social distancing by providing short-term working capital assistance to small businesses to enable retention of jobs held by low-income and moderate persons for three years. Also, assistance to microenterprises, which is a business of five or less employees. We can provide financial assistance to keep businesses that provide medical delivery and cleaning services to support home health and quarantine. The third category is public services, which is a number. There's a lot of different types. And it would be to provide new or increased public service in the form of a job training to treat disease within the community, provide testing diagnostics at a fixed or mobile location, increase capacity of health services, provide equipment, deliver meals on wheels to quarantined individuals or those who have been identified to go to social distancing, rent mortgage payments up to three months due to job loss, and also utility assistance. In public services, there is a cap of fifteen percent, which has been suspended. In your packet, there is a couple of... There's three options that we have discussed with the Citizens Advisory Committee, and it's a table. It looks like this. I'm going to go ahead and discuss that, which has been discussed in the Citizens Advisory Committee. The first one is an option for public services category, which would be to expand food services at the Mission Food Pantry. And that would be... An example would be to provide twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm just concerned, I've looked at started to see if he has it in the... On the camera. Yes, so you could put it on the camera because we have the public out there that's not virtual.
Okay.
Virtual joint, and you're talking about numbers and you're talking about programs, and they don't see the visual written.
Okay. That one, we would be...
Thank you, Randy.
We would be providing twenty-five thousand dollars as an example to the Mission Food Pantry to expand their food services. As about fifty dollars is provided, so we can go up to three months for a household. So it's a hundred and fifty dollars per household. And at a twenty-five thousand dollar allocation, we can serve up to one hundred and sixty-six people. The other expansion of services from the Mission Food Pantry is rent and mortgage assistance to prevent eviction and eventually becoming homeless. That would be an average of nine hundred dollars for three months, because it is only allowed for three months. At a total of twenty-seven hundred dollars for the assistance of one household and an allocation of three hundred thousand, we can assist approximately one hundred and eleven households. The other service would be utility assistance to prevent disconnection of light and water, and the average of three hundred per month for three months would be nine hundred for per household. An allocation of a hundred thousand would be also one hundred and eleven households that we could assist. And also, another service that we could provide is meals on wheels, as I mentioned earlier. That would be to Amigos El Vaya, which is currently allowed, allocated twenty-two thousand. We were... We were funded seventy-five thousand, and we could approximately serve fifty-two seniors. And their cost is five thirty-one per day for two hundred and fifty-seven days. So that would be option one. Is there any questions on that particular scenario?
If I may make a comment, those numbers obviously are... Can be allocated however the council chooses to. At this point, these are options and examples of funding amounts, but it can be reallocated as needed.
You also established it as a verified need order.
Yes, been discussing with the food pantry. Because of the influx and the need for food, she's been able to screen some of those residents that are out there and see what kind of needs they have. Okay, option two is one that is kind of iffy there because I'm not sure we're waiting on the surveys. I understand there's about seventy-two surveys that have been returned. And on this one, we can provide assistance to for-profit businesses in the form of grants or loans to support new businesses or expansion of businesses to create or retain jobs. And in this one, the range would be more or less between maybe fifty-five thousand or twenty thousand per business. And we can serve with the allocation of five hundred seventy-three four hundred and two completely funded. We could serve about a hundred to twenty-five businesses, depending on the range of assistance that we provide. That one, we still need more direction on that because obviously, we don't know. We don't have the... Option three is also public services, which is something that the committee members indicated they wanted to see. They wanted to see more testing. So what we did, we searched an agency who is doing the testing here in the Rio Grande Valley. It is Emergency Diagnostic Solutions, and they're providing testing for individuals with or without insurance. What they would be allocated is the portion without insurance. And their average testing costs a hundred and fifty per swap or a hundred and seventy-five for the antibodies. So if we go with the allocation, full allocation of five hundred seventy-three four hundred and two, for example, we would be able to serve at a hundred and seventy-five, which is the highest cost. We would be able to serve three thousand two hundred and seventy-six people. And all they require is an air-conditioned facility for their staffing and lab and all the work that they have to do. And that's a little bit of outreach and search that we have done. I don't know if there's any questions on any of the options.
I'll open it for the council to see if any of the council members want to be able to ask any questions.
I have a quick one.
Go ahead, ma'am.
As far as the testing, would there need to be like a doctor's order?
Yes, and would... All of the requirements are... Have to be met. Yeah, they have to have the same terms, and they have to have the... Well, a requirement for the test. To expedite the funding, HUD has recommended that grantees amend the most current fiscal year annual action plan, which would be 2019, 2020. To utilize the funding, and by doing so, will increase the current budget from nine hundred and fifteen three forty-nine to one million four eighty-eight seven fifty-one. Grantees are required to amend the consolidated plan and the annual action plan when there is a change to the allocation priorities or method of distribution of funds. An addition of an activity not describing the plan or a change to the purpose, scope, location, or beneficiaries of an activity. Substantial amendment needs to be made if proposed changes meet the criteria of the citizens' participation plan. And we have already amended our citizens' participation plan when we were looking at the committee, at the composition of the committee. So we've already met that criteria. At this point, staff is seeking direction for the use of CDBG funds.
Council, I'll open it. Which option do you have any questions on? And if you don't have any questions, which option would you want to... For my opinion, I think option one is the best one for our citizens, you know, as far as that is concerned, because on the testing part, there's already testing sites out there. And the state, the state also is opening some more, and the county is opening some more. So as far as testing services. So for me, and option number two, there's going to be some... The HERO Act comes into play, option two will be very well funded on the HEROES Act as far as that is concerned, which leaves us to option number one, which is to assist the Mission Food Pantry, because right now, I feel that our citizens are hungry out there, and they need the food, and they need to be fed as far as that. And of course, helping the Amigos El Vaya is always a great approach, especially the numbers that you mentioned on the Amigos El Vaya. So without further ado, I'll ask for...
Can we come over again?
Sure. And those amounts were just estimates. I mean, you all can allocate any certain amount or recommend any amount.
You want for her to go through the whole presentation or... The option one? Go ahead.
I have a question for Ms. Joanne.
Okay, let her answer. That's the question person.
Okay. Thank you for your advice before to look into all this for us. And I know it takes a hard work to decide the options. My question is for you, or maybe Randy can answer this for me. In the option one, would we be able to have physicians or maybe future staff members for during this time? We have to spend it by December, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, actually, this one has two years, twenty-twenty-two.
Could we maybe get some educational community outreach personnel and then maybe some social workers to help out? Because I do know that right now with the director, Ms. Otega, and also her assistant, Ms. Goda, and Janitor, they serviced four hundred and ninety-six families just last month alone.
Yes.
And now, if we're going to be adding assistance with mortgage and light and water, I think more staff. And then also, maybe, I was just thinking, because of the building, I know that we've talked about this before, Randy, the Head Start Building right next door, is there any way that maybe we can renovate that facility and make it like an additional support for that, for total services?
I can address one of them, which is something I failed to do here, I'm sorry. As far as the administration, within the four hundred and ninety thousand, I failed to mention the seventy-three thousand four hundred and two, which is two staff members, one administrative assistant, and one clerk. That comes out to about sixty-seven, and the additional monies to total up to seventy-three is for office supplies, to make sure that they have their laptops or computers to facilitate the application process.
And so the intent of those employees are to be housed at the Mission Food Pantry?
Yes, or as Ms. Otega had recommended, maybe that additional... That Mr. Perez would address. But if there's any questions on this, I can...
But before I recognize Mr. Perez, can you answer Ms. Gatz's question about option number one? Do you want for you to review it?
Again?
Again.
Just the rub that we're going to take, if we did to just kind of summarize it again so that our public could have an idea of which direction.
And then I'll recognize you, Mr. Perez.
Well, since I have a question, since we're going to go up to number one, I would like to also go up to number two, because maybe we can go half and half and for the... To help the business community that will create jobs, and maybe we can go half and half on that too.
Okay.
If you go half and half, do you want to include the seventy-three thousand? And the seventy-three thousand and the seventy-five thousand from Amigos El Vaya? Because seventy-three thousand is for staff, and seventy-five thousand is for... And you know, and we need to clarify so we can give them direction on those issues. It's not just splitting fifty-fifty, we're going to split fifty-fifty. Where are we going to cut?
Yeah, actually, what we would have to cut is the actual pantry. The entry... The pantry consists of twenty-five thousand for food, and then also three hundred, four hundred thousand for the rent and mortgage and utility assistance, and then seventy-three four hundred and two is for administration. That is the breakdown. It's in that summary right there on the table.
And where are you going to get the seventy-five thousand from?
The seventy-five thousand is the difference between the five seventy-three four hundred and two, which is the allocation.
Okay.
So that's how it goes on.
I see now.
And Joanne, how much would you save for the four hundred thousand for rent and mortgage? How many would that be assisting?
A hundred and eleven, at an average of nine hundred per month for up to three months. This is the assistance.
A hundred and eleven.
Wait, the thousand?
Households.
Households for three months.
Three months, up to three months, yes.
And the two administrators would be deciding that?
Well, they would have to, if they have to be overseen by...
Yeah, by whoever we have.
By Ms. Otega, and then we can provide a technical process of CDBG department.
And we can provide...
We deal with the agencies, and we deal with eligibility of, you know, they have to be Mission residents, and all the criteria has to be there.
I have just one more clarification. Out of the hundred and eleven families that you say, what if we help more families by just doing one month? Does it have to be the three months?
No, in the regulations, it's up to three months. But yes, we can definitely go with one month.
So potentially, we can help over five hundred families.
So if we go one month, you can say that we're going to help three hundred and thirty-three families.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pretty much the math behind it, right?
Do you even...
That's it.
Are you okay with the numbers?
Yeah, we have to refer to the numbers, Mr. Perez.
If we were to do economic development...
We're going to do it fifty-fifty.
Well, I like the fact that, I mean, I think food, I mean, there's so many other agencies that can help with that, but the rent, I don't know, and maybe it's going with two instead of... Or even one month instead of three months, I think we're able to impact more people.
But if you're going to move the money, if you're going to move the money from there to option two, then instead of multiplying three times to your hundred and eleven, we just leave it at a hundred and eleven persons for one month. You know, because it's not, we're going to cut from Amigos El Vaya. Because...
So Amigos El Vaya is only fifty-two families.
We're looking at close to two hundred and fifty...
Fifty-two people.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it.
Wait, that's seventy-five thousand.
Yes, now those fifty-two seniors were estimating and discussing in our discussions, they had to close their senior center because of the social distancing. So what they do is they have a driver service right now, curbside. So those are the individuals that they would continue serving. And they can go back to as of March, because they've already spent those months. So in reality, they already have some of those dollars already spent because they've already provided the service to our...
And Joanne, have they been going? Like, is it hard for them to get the transportation to go and pick up the...
I don't know, because she did mention fifty-two, but I don't... I do not know. I can ask.
So since they provided a service?
They do have a good...
I know it's pretty busy.
Yes, it is. It is. And they also have increased their homebound meals.
Yes.
They... Amigos El Vaya was serving three thousand meals a day prior to COVID, and now they're doing over four thousand a day.
Yes, they have continued their services, and they have also expanded to sharing meal. They've already been done, you know, meals that they also have.
So it's fifty-two people at seventy-five thousand for the two years, Ms. Joanne?
I'm sorry, I was...
It's fifty-two people extra for seventy-five thousand for two years.
This is for one year, two hundred and fifty-seven days, because it's five days a week.
Two hundred and what?
Fifty-seven days.
And that's how many meals a day?
It's one...
One lunch?
A meal per day, a meal per day, and it's five thirty-one.
And the cost is... Now, I'm just curious. It's just a question. I don't want to be like throwing daggers here. Would these fifty-two people, would they prefer to get some type of basket or foods delivered from the Mission Food Pantry to their homes instead and add the seventy-five thousand to help them with other things as far as mortgage? Because I'm sure that they're going through similar situations as somebody else versus the hot plate a day.
It's a possibility. I can go ahead and ask if they can...
But you would have to redo your survey.
Well, the seventy-five thousand...
Yeah, that would just be reallocated.
I also have a question. Could you say that they... Is this to reimburse them? Because you said they already provided the service, or is this approved to start fifty-two new people? Or is people that we already serve?
They have about forty-nine of fifty-five people who have been going, attending the senior center. So that's where they're getting that number from. So whatever they have already provided, if they wanted to, they can get reimbursed for it if they're allocated the monies. Or if we tell them, you know what, we want you to start from today to a year from today. You can do that as well if you would want to.
I think I'm one.
It's flexible.
I guess for me, I'm kind of more... I would like to see these fifty-two people, although I understand it's a hot plate and all that, get the service. But what if these fifty-two people needed other things besides that? Because I'm sure they have family members, some of them, I'm not saying all, that can help them. And so I kind of think that that seventy-five thousand would be a better use and value having the Mission Food Pantry service those people and ask them what are their actual needs? Because I don't know if the food is good or not. I'm just... I'm putting it as a perspective for my daughter. The school district called to ask me if I would like the food that they give from the cafeteria. I asked her, she said no. I also do know that a lot of people have been donating the cafeteria food from the school district to the Mission Food Pantry, and so that's given us snacks right now. So I just want to see how you all feel about that. I'm okay with whatever you all decide, but I'm just wondering if those fifty-two people that would be servicing for seventy-five thousand would be better serviced in another way?
Yes, I understand where you would want to move those seventy-five to expand the food services from twenty-five to a hundred thousand.
And then what if they need help with the water bill? What if they need help with the lattes? Could be a...
So for clarification, you know, the option could be to reallocate those seventy-five thousand, whether it's part of it to utility assistance or...
Or for the...
Because that's an average of a hundred and twenty dollars a month per person. So maybe they can use it for water, electricity?
With total seventy-five thousand, are you thinking that, I mean, let Amigos El Vaya manage the monies, but instead of going to meals, maybe going to market channels and utilities towards the... Members or...
Yes.
Is this the same thing, Amigos, right?
Yes.
Or do you want to join it with the party of the...
I mean, I don't mind if Amigos El Vaya do it, because they know their residents or their clients of who is in need, and I'm sure there's a lot that are going through trouble with getting their water and their light. I don't know.
But we already have utilities in the party.
I know, Mayor, but sometimes, because they already know they would like to help with the water instead of getting the hot plate. Because they do make these home...
Yes.
So they do know, they do have a contact with these people, but maybe now we need food, but they need help or assistance with their electricity or water.
I think a hundred and twenty dollars voucher that you can get these people to pay water, electricity. To me, I might like with Jessica, I agree, I think it would be more beneficial to them than getting one hot meal a day.
Or groceries also, I'm counting on. Those are two basic needs, basically.
Yeah.
They have shelters, they have food.
Mr. Perez? Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Already given for the tip.
So I guess the guidance, the guidance before we ask Mr. Perez is that we're going to recommend options. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to recommend option one, but we need to work it out. Work it out differently, and Mr. Perez, I would recognize, let Mr. Perez do his presentation. You may answer your question and hold on on your question, okay? If he doesn't, Mr. Perez, I'd recognize you.
Yes, well, regarding, yes, we can definitely do that. We are planning to bring this back the first meeting of June for city council approval. And the interim will clarify the use, not only the use of the funds, but also whether that option can be available through the Amigos El Vaya, where they could administer those as far as meals or for utility assistance. In regards to the building that's next door to the food pantry, bless you, sir. So that building, we are looking at a future project that we can definitely utilize bonds that we currently have available. Just to give things into perspective, the building next door, which is our current food pantry, is about similar size. Staff and I have visited the current, the previous Head Start Building that is currently vacant. It is in need of a complete remodel and renovation of that building. The food pantry was approximately about six to seven hundred thousand total renovation for that project. And so that's something that we can definitely look at in a future workshop to be able to determine whether we use those bond funds that we currently have available to renovate that building.
Now, also, we need to make sure that if we send the seventy-five thousand to Amigos El Vaya, that they give us a point of contact, because they're going to have to provide the documentation because the ones that are going to be audited is us, you know. So we need to make sure that if we give a hundred and ten dollars for utility expenditures, that they get us copies, they get us copies of the... Of the, you know, of the actual payment.
That's right. They do have an executive director that we would be point of contact for them.
Just for the fact, if not, you know, you know how it is in audits. If you don't have the proof, then they're going to bill us for the seventy-five thousand. Yes, ma'am.
Amigos El Vaya is currently enrolling more districts. So if anyone would like to call their office, the number is nine five six two one three nine four zero zero. And they can get signed up for either mobile meal or...
And they can get the, find that for either a mobile, uh, meal or, or.
And there's fifty-one individuals that are pre-identified by Amigos del Valle, uh, they reside in our city, right?
Yes.
Right, what?
Uh, Mayor, my last question, just to, my mind clear everything up. Okay, so obviously, I love option one. Um, I just think that seventy-three thousand for two personnel is too little, because I know that once our community members know that the service is gonna be offered, they're gonna be overwhelmed. I would like to see a community outreach of staff member, because you're gonna have to have, uh, someone in charge of putting all the announcements out there, the social media, because that's what a lot of people get their information from. So we would need an education, community outreach personnel of some sort to help out. Um, and then I understand that seventy-three thousand is gonna go for a clerk and then maybe someone else to assist, like, I hope a social worker, but that's just my dream. Um, and then I would like after today, I guess, just an itemized, I think, although probably Ms. Tera has said twenty-five thousand is okay for the food, I think that that number is too small. Um, I know that there is about six to seven, uh, people out in our community that fill our blessing boxes on a daily basis in the morning, afternoon and at night. I think that there is a huge need in the neighborhoods to where they don't have transportation or don't know of the mission food pantry in our area. And so they go and wait, actually, when the people are dropping off the food in the boxes. By the time they put them, that food is gone. And so I would like to see more blessing boxes throughout our quadrants of our city, because right now it's just here in this area, um, to be built and for that to be an added service, so that our community members don't have to physically go to the food pantry. They can go to the blessing boxes in our city. And I would like that project, although it's a great project, a lot of our, um, community members have been doing it upon themselves, you know, getting donations and going and building that. I think with this money, that could be a service that we could provide. I just don't, I mean, I don't know what council feels, twenty-five thousand for food, uh, for the next two years. I think that we need to look at increasing that, um, that number.
But we only have five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to work with, right?
For this, uh, this particular funding, yes, sir.
So I would like to, uh, again, like to meet for you all to get together and come back with a more itemized on a realistic way of how to figure it out, like the seventy-five thousand to Amigos del Valle, instead of the food, like we discussed, maybe for it to go to mortgage, light and water, still that, and then figure out who's gonna be dispersing of that. Is it gonna be, uh, their personnel, is it gonna be our personnel and discuss that?
But, but when do we start receiving this money?
You.
So we need to complete the process, it's an explanatory process, it's a five-day commitment.
So to me, I would like for us to make a decision now. I mean, if we're gonna come back, I mean, it's something I think that is already there. So the sooner that we give you the go-ahead, the better, I think, I mean, I would just.
So I, I have to, I have to qualify your, your statement. Uh, no decision can be made today, because it's, it was posted as a notice of workshop. So, but we do have an item agenda, item, uh, uh, for, uh, for June. Or if you wanna call a special, uh, a special meeting in, 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 like, like next Wednesday, you know, we can, we can do that too. You know, if we call a special meeting, then we can take action. Perez, your recommendation.
Thank you, sir, if I may, um, you know, we, we did, uh, present the three options. You know, we can, uh, seek direction, uh, as a, as an option one per, per se, so we can bring it back for, uh, council approval, uh, so we can itemize as discussed and also, uh, to finalize that option. But, uh, in the meantime, um, you know, uh, asking for direction for the, for option one, uh, we will have, we will, uh, still go through the process, um, and bring it back the first meeting in June for approval. If, uh, if we see it in the regular city council meeting, if not, we can call a special meeting for an actual approval, but.
Can we have consensus of council to see option one is the one that we wanna focus on for the, for, for the award of the, of, uh, of the money?
I like option one, I would just like to, instead of nine hundred dollars, you give seven hundred and fifty dollars for two months to be able to impact two hundred people versus a hundred and eleven. I think seven fifty is a good reasonable amount.
And if you're going to put also the seventy-five thousand for the, uh, for the employees, make sure that you put it for two years. You know, because a-after the two years and the third year, we're gonna have to sustain those positions.
Well, we have it as a part-time temporary, so it's, uh.
I, I think that it could go either way. I think that once you have that person run this program, he or she can decide whether it's gonna be one or two months or whatever they need. Because a lot of times, people that come in are just grateful for the one help. Now, if they are a very extreme, everybody goes to different circumstance, it would be case by case.
No, we can't have even one, that's what.
I don't anticipate us having the funds for two years, so you, I, I agree, I, what Jessica was saying, this seventy-three thousand per hundred is just for temporary, right? So you're not gonna have an employee for two years. I mean, the funds, people need it now, I mean, because how are you gonna qualify somebody in November, God forbid, that all of this is, you know, over in the next couple of months or something, that, I mean, all, the people is gonna need the money now, maybe not later on. I don't think we're, we're gonna have money for more than, how about six months?
No, absolutely, I mean, we, we feel that the, the need is, the need is, uh.
What are you talking about?
The need is temporary.
Also, uh.
It's one will be like a part-time.
So there was a study on another COVID, so we should say there's a possibility of additional funds.
Uh, yeah, uh, I think, I think that, that is getting those money.
To go back and answer Mr. Plaza, I, I honestly, um, I guess for me coming back from the social work background, I kind of understand that these are temporary, but I would, the city is in need of this type of staff to deal with. Uh, I'm sure that you're bombarded with phone calls and so is the mission food pantry. I would really like to see that these two positions be some way or some sort incorporated with our city staff in the future and not be seen as something temporary right now. I think that funding as we go with just everything that's going on with COVID is just gonna be a needed, uh, those needed positions for right now. Um, and so I would hate for that to be advertised, because I would like whoever applies for these positions for it to be somebody coming from an agency with a lot of experience to help us grow this department, because I think it's, with everything going on, I think that that's where we're, we're headed. And then they could, together working with the mission food pantry staff, work on the policies and the procedures of who gets what and all of that. But the more that we help, um, with Nori and everybody care with Mr. Plaza and that, the mayor, of course, uh, the more that we help, the better.
Final question, final comment, but. You're good, Mr. Perez, you're good, nothing good.
Mayor, and I know I read and you all sent me a great text of all the millions that we're getting, uh, from the county and all of that. Would that be answering Mr. Plaza? Because I too am with Mr. Plaza that I wanna help our local businesses. Some of the funding can help with that, like, there's more funding coming into our city too, where we can help in that aspect.
That is correct, there's a, there's a project, uh, there's a project to address those.
Okay, I just didn't want our community, whoever's watching, for them to think that we're not thinking of them. We are, it's just a phase that we're getting through CDBG funding.
Yes.
Um, and then we can still think of our businesses.
Right now, the best, the best committee is looking into it, uh, looking both, uh, on helping, helping the downtown merchants and all the other, other small businesses, restaurants and so forth, they're, they're working on a plan right now. But that's, that's, that's under the CARE Act, or that was given to, to the counties.
That's tomorrow. Yes, yes, yes. So tomorrow, we will have a workshop, uh, for, for that allocation, for to, uh, to be able to discuss the different components of the eligibility and also to include, uh, uh, economic development programs.
So I was given, uh, I was given a thirty-day, uh, uh, limit for, for us to, for the city to present the, the budget to the town, how we're gonna spend it, so, so that's why we focused, the meeting for tomorrow.
Um, so you pretty much want some direction for now, right? I mean, to me, once again, the sooner that we did this on there, I think the better, so. Can you summarize what we pretty much the direction that we have given you this up?
Yes, so, uh, the summary of option one, uh, would, would be, uh, well, we would be out, reallocating some of the, the, the total amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand four oh two to include the mission food pantry, the, uh, rent, mortgage assistance and utility assistance, uh, providing, uh, salaries for two additional staff, uh, regarding this, within this funding. And then also, uh, the allocation to Amigos del Valle. At that point, uh, this combined would equal to five hundred and seventy-three thousand four oh two. Uh, we will come back, uh, the first meeting, if, if, uh, if scheduled at the first meeting in June to be able to, uh, provide a itemized of each of these allocations uh, for approval from council at that meeting.
Mayor.
Oh, oh, hold on, I mean, uh, Amigos del Valle makes sure that it's clear that, that it's not for, for the lunch. It's, it's, it's for the supplement, so.
Yes, sir, and, and that's something that, that we'll, uh, wanna clarify with the Amigos del Valle agency to be able to coordinate that, yes.
Let me start, go ahead.
Just something, when you said it, it just clicked, um, I think that what we can do, depending on what they answer back to you, is the seventy-five thousand can assist a community member that is sixty-five and older. You know, uh, I don't know if it, sixty, oh, I don't know the age, sixty and older, uh, whether they're with the Amigos del Valle, I don't know if that we wanna get into technical.
I was gonna say, though, if, if you're gonna say we're gonna open it to the public, it's best for us to administer ourselves and not give it to the Amigos del Valle, because the Amigos del Valle, they're bounded by their, by the bylaws, serve only members of the Amigos del Valle, am I correct?
But, Nori, I, I just don't want it to be, I don't want it to be the new fifty-two.
There's definitely a.
I know, but what, I guess my clarification, the fifty-two new that were supposed to be, gonna be helped with this food, I want that seventy-five thousand to help any Amigos del Valle, new or previous to need assistance with water, light, mortgage, food, whatever that they need.
Okay.
Not just the fifty-two that haven't been serviced, that would get the meal, I'm talking about all the clients.
To open it up to them.
Whoever, the current and the new, um.
But they have to reside, they have to.
Of course, they have to reside in our city limits, be sixty and older. And if they need help through the two personnel and the mission food pantry to assist them and determining that, because I'm sure they have their personnel to figure that out. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, I would like to adjust the three hundred thousand to be distributed within among two hundred people for seven fifty a month, or seven hundred, right, for three months. I think seven fifty is.
I'm, uh, giving maybe the five hundred and get more people.
Mr. Plaza, I think that that would have to be, you know, the, the staff deciding what that's gonna be. Because there's gonna be some people that are much more in need of more, depending on what their mortgage payment is, what their light, their water. So I think it's a case by case basis.
We have to go through the other market.
Yeah.
For those rates, this is just narrative.
Because of course, there's, uh, probably a lot of people that have been trying to go to the county and they're about to lose their house and all that. So when they bring you that, of course, that's a very crucial case and you can give them however much Mr. Plaza is saying or more, depending, because, you know, to prevent them from going through that.
But you can also be careful, you can, uh, uh.
Yes.
I mean, all of this, a hundred and then the people that need the five hundred dollars, it's not gonna be anything.
And so, so we, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go back, uh, as, as staff to look at a standard rate to be able to, uh, be, uh, even across, uh, so that way everyone has that same opportunity and not necessarily, uh, you know, some more than others.
Final votes. Perez? Gatzas? Toa?
Hi, thank you.
Plaza? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Yes.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in full same sign, uh, motion carries. Return it, thank you.